Good evening and welcome to the January 20th, 2021 Old Colony School Committee meeting. This evening, we are joined by committee members from Ekusnet, Evelyn Dulei, Maurice Saint-Douman, Justin Broder from the town of Lakeville, Robert Marshall, Don Foster, Gary Miansfield from the town of Carver, Joeyan Pushkar, John Williams, from the town of Mattapoiset, Keith Cassidy, Nancy Souza, Richard Damash, and from the town of Rochester, David Hughes, Darren Cruz, and our chairperson Shirley Burke. Also in attendance, we have Mike Parker, principal, Sarah Griffith, business manager, Matt Trahan, Director of Athletics, Kyle O'Neil, Director of Technology, Katie Tucinardi, Academic Coordinator, Seth Patello, Vocational Coordinator, Crystal Fay, Special Services Coordinator, and a special guest this evening from the NASA Globe Education Partnership, Ms. Larissa Shelton. So, thank you, everyone. At this point in time, I would like to turn the meeting over to our school committee chairperson, Ms. Shirley Burke.
Welcome, everyone. I would ask those in attendance, please rise or look to the regents.
Do the flag of the United States of America, stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We embark on a new term of presidency. We have on the my P of Complex, a quote attributed to the King that I hopefully will get correct, but it says that you don't need to see the whole staircase, you just need the first step. So, as we embark today, hopefully, as a nation, we can put political ideologies aside and work on that first step that brings us to unifying as a country that respects stability and respects global law. Thank you. Is there anybody for public participation? I know this is all here, but anyone online? Hearing none. I am going to ask that everybody, please make sure that you have the amended agenda. It went out this morning to all of us, and that we get to this agenda. What I'd like to do is, we have a guest Twitter. I would like to take her out of order so that she can, if she's still in the pot after her presentation, or more than willing, Larissa, for you to stay with us. We'll turn it over to Alan.
Wonderful. So, I have had the wonderful opportunity over the last few years to get to know Larissa Shelton, who was our guest this evening. In our first agenda, I sent out Larissa's very decorated credentials. I would like to give her the opportunity to introduce herself, but she is a representative from the NASA Globe Education Partnership, and I am just thrilled to have you with us tonight, my friend. And at this point in time, I welcome you on behalf of the entire Old Colony community. Thank you for joining us, and would like to turn the floor over to you.
Thank you very much for the opportunity. It's a privilege to be with you today. It's such a special day for all Americans, so I take it as a great honor for me to join you today. So, thank you to Superintendent Polanski for the invitation and for such a gracious introduction. So, just to, I have three slides, if you don't mind, and if technology would cooperate, do you want me to show them now, share them as we speak? Is that okay? Sure. So, it should momentarily showing on your screens. Let me know if you have any problems seeing it, so I just would talk without the slides. Anyone, can you give me a hands up? Okay. So, just a few words of introduction. What makes me relevant to CTE education? I'm a proud recipient of MAVA Award, as a strong supporter of career technical education. I'm serving on MAVA Annual Conference Steering Committee. You probably, many of you attending to Connecting for Success, so that's a result of joint effort, and I'm proud to serve in that. I was privileged to serve as a consultant at Blackstone Valley for four years. You can see the rest of my long resume in pictures. So, as you can see, I am a certified NASA Globe educator. I am a NASA Globe Partner in Massachusetts, and I have many other titles. If you have any questions about specifics, I'm happy to address them. But, in general, I'm a licensed professional engineer with 20-plus years of engineering experience, who brave enough to try my skills in switching to education and see what I can help as a former engineer to, if there is anything I can assist fellow educators, especially in career technical education, because I feel that engineering career for practically all graduates from career technical education would be a natural way to develop their careers. So, I am privileged to serve and work with NASA for a number of years, since I was first certified in 2014, and I have a privilege to work directly with NASA Space Flight Centers in the United States and globally. So, there is a very unique effort run under the NASA umbrella. It's a special program for high school and middle school students in the United States and around the world. It's sponsored by NASA, it's supported by National Science Foundation, NOAA, and Department of State, and the nonprofit organization that I have a privilege to run, also a formal NASA Globe Partner in Massachusetts. So, in a nutshell, what is NASA Globe Program? So, in order for all of us as humans to continue to make sure that life is continuing without any interruption on our own small planet, somebody has to watch for the condition of our planet. So, that somebody is, who is leading this effort, is our own agency. It's NASA, and under NASA effort and NASA leadership, there is a global effort of monitoring condition of our planet 24/7/365. What it really means, it means we have a number of satellites who are collecting data as we speak, and we are very carefully with many engineers in the US and around the world, receiving this data, analyzing this data, and if there is any danger for humans on Earth to lose water, or to lose air, or if there is something suspicious going on on our planet Earth in terms of the different atmospheres and other spheres, so we have a capacity to do something about it and warn the humans on Earth that something is not going the right way. So, however, it's a massive effort, and NASA is very concerned about really increasing effort and contributions to education. So, they feel we don't have nearly enough engineers and nearly enough technicians who would devote their careers to this kind of work of serving satellites and serving our space missions, and there is a shortage of that workforce. So, with that, our government sponsoring these programs, and it's my privilege and my honor to really share this with you and invite you to this journey as well. So, what it, in a nutshell, what this program is about, it teaches high school students how satellites collect data, how, what kind of data satellites is collecting, who and how we're processing this data, and what we can do with it. So, that's a first step in preparation for potential careers in the future, if any of your graduates would like to devote their efforts to space exploration and monitoring condition on our planet. So, there is, it's a free program for all. I'm happy to assist your teachers from academics or from any shops, whoever wants to try to run this program, maybe on a small scale first year, but it would be a unique opportunity for all your students, whoever would have an interest and desire to really look more into this, to participate in a very meaningful way to contributing to collecting that data together with NASA and learning how NASA operates, who does what, and when, and maybe some of your graduates potentially would consider these careers for themselves. So, that would be a unique opportunity for them to build professional network and relationship with NASA engineers as they studying in your wonderful Old Colony School, so without delays, without waiting for any other stages in their life, so they can do it right now. And from my perspective, this is a very interesting and exciting way to help our students to really expand their horizons, and it doesn't matter who they would like to be in the future, to, at least to the minimum, to have NASA Globe in their portfolio, that would really make them very capable and very desired by any employer, if you will. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, and again, this is free for all. The only thing that is needed is interest, excitement, just wanted to do, to contribute to this important effort for engineers, with engineers, and I'm happy to guide your teachers or instructors from any shops, if they would like to participate, and I'm happy to answer any questions at this point.
Thank you, Larissa. We appreciate that. And what we're thinking really is, there are some STEM grants out available. We also have the idea that we could start a big club, and we've had a few of our teachers express interest in guiding this effort. So, when Larissa contacted us, let us know that this opportunity was available free of cost, that was very exciting. It's a chance for our students to meet people who are connected with NASA, and to expand their own professional networks, and we were grateful for the contact and the outreach that came as a result of the effort. So, thank you again. If there are questions, we'd like to open it up to the panel.
Larissa, if you mind, if I could ask, if a student becomes, let's say we take this to a club level initially, what would a student experience in that club? I mean, would they be shown data that satellites collect, and then they sit with someone, ask a discussion of what you do with this, with the information, that kind of thing, because I'm wondering how, not curriculum per se, but exactly what it is our children would receive?
Sure, absolutely. It's a great question, and thank you for asking. So, what your students' experience would look like? They would learn how to, they would upload free NASA application on their devices with the permission of their parents, and with a teacher, and with a teacher. So, it's guaranteed and developed by NASA as a government agency, so they're very, they're following all the compliance in terms of privacy and security of our children. So, it's safe and free to upload on your devices. It's a NASA official application. So, with those, with these devices, they can be, they will be provided by specific instructions, how to collect data as they, for example, let me give you a very specific example. Let's just say if they would participate in collaborating with the satellite engineering group in NASA, those satellites are monitoring the conditions of the clouds. The satellites are taking pictures of the clouds from above the clouds. Somebody has to take pictures of the clouds from the surface of our planet, from Earth, looking up to this cloud. So, they will be taking those pictures with the NASA application, with their cell phones, or iPads, or other devices that are permitted in your school, and they would be taught by teacher, who would also be trained on how to upload that data to the satellite mission database, the satellite mission that is serving your specific area in your specific time. And it's a very interesting thing that the student who will be uploading that data, looking from the surface of Earth, looking up to the sky and taking pictures of a cloud, they will receive confirmation from satellite automatically. A satellite passing your specific location where you take pictures, they will send confirmation, and you would be able to, your students will be able to compare how the same cloud looks from the space, and compare with what they see on Earth. So, that will give them an opportunity to learn about data, about NASA database, that will give them an opportunity to learn how to use and operate NASA application, that will provide them an opportunity to communicate directly with NASA engineers, and I would be more than happy to arrange specific, special guests coming live to your school from Space Flight Centers. So, they would be talking to engineers who service, servicing this satellite mission specifically to whom they contributing. By the way, you see this gentleman on the, I'm not sure if it's still showing, but he's, he's one of my colleagues, and he is happy to really live speak to all your students and talk more about, he's a NASA engineer. He is a mature gentleman now. He's on part-time at NASA, but he was in his younger years, he was a Deputy Director of the International Space Station, and Director of Astrophysics, and he was Director of Hubble Telescope Mission as well. So, that will provide your students and your teacher a first step in communicating with professional engineers from NASA, contributing meaningful data, learning about data, and learning about how the system operates, and hopefully, this will spark interest in satellite careers, that a lot of technicians and engineers are servicing this. I hope I answered your question.
You did, you did. Fascinating. Anybody have any questions for our guests?
Well, thank you very much for joining us, Larissa.
No problem. Just let me know if there are any questions after your meeting, and I will ask your wonderful Superintendent Polanski to provide my contact information and share it with your, with your, with your staff, and with your, whoever wants to follow up with me and ask any questions. So, thank you very much again for the invitation, and it was a privilege to be with you today.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Um, we do not have a consent agenda tonight. The only thing that would have been on it was the December minutes, and I had suggested that instead of trying to rush those minutes to preparation of them, that we would vote off for February. So, with no consent agenda, does anybody have any questions for Sarah on the operating statement? Hearing none. What's available for review? Do not believe there is any old business, so then move right into the new business. It appears as though sadly, the chat review subcommittee has achieved its mission, and it is ready to be dissolved. So...
Motion made.
Second. Motion has been made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Next recommended action is to accept the donation from the Massachusetts Restaurant Association Educational Foundation, valued at $1,244, to the Culinary Arts Department. There is a summary of the donation included in the agenda. Seth, do you want to speak to it, or does the agenda speak for itself?
Yep, the agenda pretty much speaks for itself. However, you know, we just want to go on record by saying it was a fantastic and very thoughtful donation that the Mass Restaurant Association provided for all of our culinary students, and in light of our pivot for tomorrow, it's definitely, you know, one of those things that is, it definitely helps out. So, we're grateful for their support. And yes, a letter will be sent to them.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor to accept the donation?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone, any extensions? Recommended action, to accept the donation received from Asher Kesler to the Cost of Politics Department for Products valued at $135. Those donations list is included in the agenda.
A moment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor are accepting the donation?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Motion passed. Recommended action, to accept the monetary donation to the Cost of Politics Department, the amount of $1,400 from the Nicole Donero Memorial Fund. $100 will be put towards each ninth-grade student's Cost of Politics debt.
A moment. Second.
With a motion and a second. Is there any question? Hearing none. If we're ready to move on, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none. Any extensions? Items unanticipated, 48 hours in advance. I will turn to Mr. Polanski.
Just a quick note, that we've seen a dramatic increase in the number of close contacts within our school community as a result of the message this evening. We will be pivoting to fully remote, to return to our hybrid model, our first approach first. That is tentative planning. We will follow the course of cases, the pandemic, positive within the community, close contacts within our own community. We'll keep people informed as we proceed down this path. The other piece that we wanted to bring to the attention of the committee, as we always do, try to keep you informed in advance, is our hope to, our potential fall to athletic participation with outdoor sports, could the opportunity present itself in the event we see a decrease, or steady decrease in the number of positive cases taken place locally. Again, that will look to put on the either February agenda, or call a meeting if needed, or vote. I want to preface that statement with just early notifications for the folks that question or concern, which we now, in February, we could reach out.
Any questions or discussion on any of that?
Yes, I have a question.
Hold on.
I got a phone call today, you know, announcing this, but I picked it up, I said hello, and there was such a long pause, I almost hung up. Is there a way to shorten the response time from when you answer the phone until the message starts?
It's a good question, Don. I think that in recording the message, we're prompted by a beep, and I start immediately at the beep. I'm not sure what delay is a result of, but we'll look into that. That's good feedback. Thank you.
And also, I'm looking at my screen, and all it says is sound. I'm not getting any pictures. Is that just me?
That's you.
If you go to the top right, you have an option for the different views that are available. We're using a central microphone here at the meeting, which is represented by the word "sound," but the view that you can opt for, in the top right of your screen, you can click on a number of different alternatives, which would have the options, the nine tile setup, and that gives you more of a Brady Bunch, for lack of a better explanation, Brady Bunch here, where you can see everybody who has their camera on.
Are you talking to the wrong guy? I'm just happy listening, then. Goodbye.
Happy to hear you.
Subcommittee reporting. Well, Budget Subcommittee? Anything to report?
Sorry, I was on mute. Actually, we had a report last month. We didn't have any other meetings, but we did have conversation with Ekusnet, town administrator, and I believe it was January 5th, Aaron, it was Sarah, myself, Shirley, and I'm probably missing somebody else, but I'm sorry if I am, and gave them the heads up on how much the increase is going to be for their part of the budget next year. So, to give them a heads up, so hopefully, they can put the money aside from, if they have to steal it from someplace else. But, and I know there was supposed to be one with Lakeville, but I don't, I don't know if Aaron had that one yet. And that's about all I got. If Aaron wants to elaborate on it, that's, or Sarah, I'm welcome to.
We did have meetings with both Lakeville and Ekusnet, just to let them know that they had seen the biggest increases in terms of enrollment at this point in time, as a courtesy to give them a forewarning as to potential impacts. We also have a meeting scheduled for February 2nd, where we'll further our budget conversation with the Budget Subcommittee, and that's on the agenda at the end of the, at the end of the agenda of the meeting date. Thank you, Bill.
IT Subcommittee, Justin?
So, we had a meeting yesterday. My good friend Bob Marshall told me he could give the whole update today on all the subjects. The items that we talked about were a discussion around asset tags and inventory. So, Kyle has made some serious headway in the thousands of assets that the school has between Chromebooks and computers, and monitors, and printers, and everything, and cataloging all of those items. One thing I've known is that he's still passing out Chromebooks to students as of this week, especially with everybody completely remote. So, there's some discussion around one-to-one at some point. We also had worked and discussed on, within the Subcommittee, a document wrapped around cloud security and best practices. So, that document will be edited probably once or twice more. Once that document is done, the IT Subcommittee will push that document up to the Policy Subcommittee, so Policy can review it, and then once that is vetted, then it will be adopted by the District Committee at some point. So, that is ongoing. So, our next meeting is actually February 9th, at which point we should have, hopefully, a finished document. IT Subcommittee meeting is the 9th. At that point, we hope to have a finished document that we can then pass up to Policy, and that's pretty much the majority of what we discussed. And that's pretty much the majority of what we discussed.
Justin, I have to tell you that I was watching the subcommittee and I, I was with you through all of the inventory talk and tagging and all of that, and then when you went to the next step, I stayed 15 more minutes with you and I was totally lost. So if that goes up to all of us, I'm going to ask that, you know, a dictionary or somebody pretty, although Joanne is very proficient in technology, she will probably need to be ready for multiple questions. It was an impressive discussion all we were having last night.
Thank you for watching.
As long as you do it, I did.
Adam, chair?
Yes, Paul?
If, if I may, I, I just want to make a, a quick comment. Thank goodness we have Justin leading us. I, I, I won't profess that I was able to follow everything he was saying, but with some, some focus on my part, I was able to follow a lot of it. And it was very, very important work that's being done. And I'm very happy to know that we have somebody with Justin's credentials leading us. So I thought he did a fine job.
Well, I am equally grateful that the policy subcommittee has people whose technology is far more advanced than what mine is. I will be out of my element, but I begin on the other. Any questions for Justin? Hearing none, Isabel, you are on.
Hi, I hope everyone's having a pretty good month. I just want to share some things that the student council has been working on. And they've been planning on moving some things that they were had done this year due to COVID further in the spring, like the signing of the pergola and maybe moving some type of homecoming in the spring. They've also been planning virtual and in-person spirit weeks, but that will be probably pushed further when we are in the classroom, just like their ideas of decorating the shop, the doors, as well as there was a video sent out to teachers and staff. And it was a video of officers in National Honor Society and student council and just the student officers of the senior class making videos and sharing their appreciation towards staff. I'm hope I'm clear, I know my internet's kind of fuzzy.
I actually shut down some cameras to improve, that was not people locking off, that, that was people, that was me shutting cameras so we could hear you better to help the signal. So please know that was, for anyone who saw their camera go off, it helped to improve Isabel's signal. Once we shut down some cameras, thank you for that update.
Thank you.
Thank you, Isabel. From the administration, the MSBA statement of interest. Before Aaron gets into that, just so that everyone knows, I had asked prior to the MSBA meeting this week that the future planning subcommittee reconvene. I had thought that with Treetown taking move that it did to go to VP, that it gave a very opportune time for us to reassess where we were and where we wanted to go. That discussion I had both with Dawn, who I mistakenly believe was the future planning chair. I have since had that same discussion with Nancy, who was gracious enough to accept my apology for not knowing who the chairs of the subcommittees were. But it was important to be in, then in hearing the MSBA information news, I'm going to explain to you why it's, I believe critically important that that subcommittee become active again. Aaron's going to give you a lot of information, I'm trying to curb my excitement. What some of the things I heard, because there are status device, the advice that MSBA is giving people is to take it in measured steps. But if things move forward as we hope they will, action will need to be taken very quickly, if it can begin more sooner than later, I think it would serve us well. And with that introduction, I will turn it over to Aaron.
Thank you. Before I go into the MSBA senior study, I do want to also recognize Isabel Garcia. Mr. Parker put out a beautiful piece in his newsletter, one highlighted Isabel and her dancing. And the other was a highlight of one of our staff members, very involved outside of school in fitness instruction. And both pieces were a beautiful testimony from both individuals. So I just wanted to congratulate Isabel on the piece that was done and let her know it was a beautiful representation of who you are. In addition, it was wonderful to see some of the clips of you dancing, you're extremely talented and congratulations on that. So thanks for the extension, congratulations. And now to the MSBA statement of interest update. Basically, what we were told is that we moved from a group of 71 applications to a group of 30 applications for MSBA project. And the next phase of this project will be one where they're conducting a senior study. That senior study included a one-hour meeting with members of our administrative team, myself, Sarah Griffith, our business manager, Bob Suza, our facilities director, Mr. Parker, our principal, and Shirley Barker, our school committee chairperson. And basically, senior studies examine applicable enrollment program under or facility issues as identified within our statement of interest. The senior study visits, which will come next, are conducted by MSBA staff members and senior architects with extensive knowledge of building systems and educational programs. A senior study is not an invitation to work with the MSBA, but is part of the due diligence review phase of the MSBA SOI process. What will happen following the next phase of this process, which is their visit, and Nancy will be extending an invitation for you to join the administrative team on that tour as the director, as the chairperson of the future planning subcommittee. But after that visit, they will make a determination as to whether we will be invited into the, quote, the pipeline. And at that point in time, we are considered a candidate for the MSB, or not just a candidate, we're considered, invited into the process. So we're cautiously optimistic, I think that our meeting with the MSB went extremely well. I'd like to thank Bob Suza for the incredible amount of preparation and work that he put into the statement of interest. He did a beautiful job outlining the, the needs that we have as a school from a facilities standpoint. And the administrative team really came together to put together what I think is a really thorough document. In Shirley's words, "There was very, there was really a very accurate and picture painted with no embellishment." And I do believe we are a strong candidate for this opportunity. There will be a strong need for us to identify our vision moving forward. And I've had conversations with Nancy and with Dawn and Shirley a few occasions just due to the nature of phone calls that we've had. And I'm excited about the process. We need to think about what this means in terms of conversations with our five-member towns as well. And I'll be reaching out to some of my colleagues who have been successful in this process. Because I'm a firm believer that we certainly don't have all the answers out of the gate, as Shirley said, we take the first step, we might not see the end of the fair case, but we also have some great supports along the way, and we can learn from those who have been successful in that. So I have a list of people that we can help to, we'll sit with the future planning committee, talk about future enrollment, potential chapter 74 program expansion, adoption, and we'll see where the, the process takes us. They said that we're going to sign that in April of where we speak, so that's again, say. Did I miss anything?
Nope, and what comes with that notification in April, we are invited to the eligibility phase. That eligibility phase is pretty much a nine-month program where they're looking for specifically reporting profiles, projections, appropriating schematic monies, it will, it will come very quickly. So again, the need for the future planning committee to begin to get its head around this project. Whether it comes or not, because they were also very encouraging that if we did not get in the first round in April, that it was, it's something we should probably be working on because it was a strong suggestion that we consider just applying again and just keeping at it. So I would also commend, piggyback on what Aaron said, I have the unique pleasure of sitting in front of a computer that didn't have a camera or a microphone. So I was truly silent, which most of you know is difficult for me. And I was so impressed with the presentation that our administrators gave. You could see they had answered all the questions, they elaborated on concerns without exaggerating what those concerns were. You could see the participants from state nodding their head in understanding. So I don't think that discussion could have gone any better than what it was. And I left that extremely hopeful where or what we might hear. Does anybody have any questions?
Unrelated, I do have a question, is anyone having trouble hearing us? I, I did get.
I, I am.
Yeah, I, I did get a message in the chat from one person and I just want to see if it's something that everyone's experiencing.
Every once in a while, every once in a while, it sounds like something's pinging. What Isabel was talking, it was like a pinging noise when I read it. So I, it seems to have cleared up since then.
I find, Aaron, that anybody who is at home remote, I have no trouble understanding. But for the people who are at the school, speaking, obviously using a mask, that's got to hinder things. But I'm, I'm having trouble understanding every part of each word. And it's, it's been kind of ongoing, you know, since we started, started this. Just, I, I'm, I'm just wondering, do we, do we have a broadband issue, should we expand it? I, I don't know enough about this to offer an opinion, but it is an ongoing problem for me.
I just want to weigh in because I've had no issue hearing any of you this whole time, except for Isabel, that was it, and I think that was.
Okay.
That's helpful, Joanne, because we were trying to establish whether it may have been something on her end locally or on our end, and I did get a message from someone in the chat, which prompted me to just ask the question. But if you're not having any issue, it could be someone, it's possible, and I don't know enough about, I'd have to lean on Justin and Kyle, but it could be someone's local signal too.
Yeah, I mean, definitely Isabel, but like, everything else for me has been perfect.
Okay, good to know, thank you. I'm sorry I didn't interrupt the meeting with any free, but I think it's important to try and resolve while we're live, thank you.
Aaron, I think if you, if you look away from where the mic is, then the, your words start to break up. You, we pick the first, the beginning of the word, but you don't catch the end of the word, and then there's a little gap between that and when the.
That's my experience too, Dick.
Yeah.
All right, that's helpful.
When you, I'm trying to watch people's heads and to see if the, the turning of the head and the breakup of the words is causing some of that problem.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Mr. Parker, do you have anything that you want to add? I know the newsletter is out, but.
Yeah, just, just a couple of things tonight. The newsletter is out, I want to give a special thanks to Marsha Davenport. With my assistant out on attorney leave, she took on the chore of putting that all together for the most part, and she did a tremendous job, so without her, we would not have a newsletter this week, as the technology is way beyond me. So thank you to Marsha. My special recognition this month at the faculty meeting went out to the paraprofessionals and Chris LaFaye for their work in the in-person teaching and learning in the, in the library. The paraprofessionals have just been unbelievable in this whole thing. They're teaching the kids, keeping them on task, they're covering classes, they're doing lunch duties. That group has just been unbelievable in keeping us, keeping us going. So I, I, you know, made them the special recognition this week. Other than that, I had my school council meeting today, and really the big thing that came out from the parents is that they're still a little worried about all the homework that, you know, some of them are, the homework that the kids are getting. So we'll address that with some of the teachers and see, see what they think, but yeah, other than that, that's about it, so thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Is there anything else from anyone? You have the dates of all the upcoming subcommittee meetings, negotiations this fall night, huge planning on the 27th of January, budget is February 2nd, IT February 9th, and our next district school committee is February 17th at 6:00. Miss Noda Business, all the meetings adjourned. There you go. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, good night, everybody.
Good night.